I'm going to make Brackton Cable a co-host so they can record. I'm also going to make Evan a co-host. Madam Chair, we are ready when you are.
All right, thank you. So Tony Gonzalez is here, Chair of the Planning Board, calling together the Planning Board meeting for January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll start with a roll call. Larry Hassan.
Here.
James Sweeney.
Here.
Who are we missing? That's it. It's just the three of us, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Tony Gonzalez is present. Before we get started, I have to read a little message. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with the government order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. General law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the Planning Board. Utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record. For those of you joined by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's webpages. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure account accuracy. First, do we have a motion to accept the minutes for last month's meeting?
Motion to accept minutes from last month's meeting.
Second.
Okay, okay. Favor Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Calling as always, yes. Thank you. I probably should talk about the applicants that are being continued. So if there's anyone for these properties, they are being continued because we are short on board members. I'm told we hope to have a fourth member as of next month. Is that still hopeful, Rob?
It's it's hopeful.
Okay, politically correct. So if you're here for a return to ZBA fourteen forty-nine Main Street, that's continued. Return to ZBA for forty-eight North Pearl Street, that is also continued. Return to ZBA for one twenty-four Bradley Ave, continued. Return to ZBA for one fifty-nine North Main Street, also continued. Anyone is here for those. We will not be hearing these this evening. All right. Yes.
It was also, I don't know if we need to say it now, site plan approval was continued for one thirty-seven, one forty-one and one forty-seven Main Street. I see that as continued. I don't know if it still is.
Yes, you're you're correct. Thank you. That one is also continued. So if you're here for one thirty-seven to one forty-seven Main Street, then not be hearing this this evening. Okay. All right, Evan A and R's.
We have two A and Rs tonight. First one is one twenty-four Manly Street. That's the Father Bill's property. They are just looking to, it's basically, it's all owned by, it's on the VA land. So pretty much they're just looking to split off the piece of land that Father Bill's is going to be on from the larger VA property. Everything looks good.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Next one.
All right, second one is thirteen eighty Main Street. It's the Campello High Rise. They are in a refurbishment process. They're going to redevelop the area. But they need to, there's a bit of floodplain that crosses into that parcel. And having that present on the same piece of land prevents them from getting certain funding. So they are splitting off that little piece of land from the rest of it. And again, everything was good.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right. And next lot releases, Evan?
Yes, we have one forty-nine Keswick. We have all the surety we need. There's no issues with releasing the lot.
Straightforward. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, no returns, request for extensions.
And we have two of those. First one is Oak Hill Way. They've been working on it. They just haven't finished it yet. So they're asking for a two-year extension.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. The next one?
The second one is the Lincoln School on Highland Ave. It's a neighbor works project. They've just finished their whole finance, getting financed, tax credits, all that stuff, and they're hoping to begin construction in the spring. So they would like an extension.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call Aaron Son.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Right, thank you. Well, we have street acceptances, Evan. You're still up.
We do. Two of them. First one is, what is it? Oscar, yeah, Oscar Ave. I think, yeah, I think they're fine. I don't know. If we have to do anything for them, but that's the first one.
Is there a counselor who would like to talk about these by any chance?
It looks like there is.
And Counselor Lally, please, you may address the the board.
Thank you. There is a counselor. Thank you, counselors. Thank you, commissioners. This is something that, something that we've brought to the board before. It's really pretty, pretty simple. A lot of these streets, when they were created, they were never handed over to the city, so they remained a private road owned by all of the people who lived on them. But over time, because they're, you know, woven in with the rest of the city, they have, you know, you know, people, people don't realize that they live on a private road. These roads, when they have potholes, the potholes are repaired. They are plowed in the wintertime. They see the trucks come and pick up the trash and every other aspect of daily city life that leads them to think that their road is just their road and there's nothing else about it. So when they get to the point where the road needs to be repaved or significant work needs to be done, and they try and make that happen, they suddenly realize that they can't do that unless they're going to pay for it themselves. The road's private. These people are paying the same taxes, fees and bills as everybody else. And they're surrounded, they're in the neighborhood surrounded by by public roads. It's really about getting them the same treatment as everyone else. You know, there's no, there's no reason for this to be a private road. We've brought plenty of these before the board, and I've appreciated the board's support on this. It's it's pretty standard. There's no money attached. There's no timetable. The only thing we're doing is just making it possible to be paved in the future. And locking it in.
Okay, thank you, counselor.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right. Next one is Newberry Street.
Second one is Newberry Street. It's just a portion of Newberry Street, a little bit between Spring Street and Pleasant Street. Some pretty bad disrepair, it seems to me. But again, I don't know if anyone wants to speak on this topic.
Rob, any counselors? All right, if there are none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Right, thank you. So first on the agenda, we have rules and regulations updates. Mr. Mayor, are you going to be presenting on that?
Evan is going to present on that.
All right, Evan, you're still up.
Yeah, it's pretty simple. We're just looking to update some of the rules and regs for the planning board. We don't have anything concrete yet. This is really just to inform everybody that it's going to be happening soon. We're looking at changing the way we do A and Rs a little bit. So the direct, so we don't have to bring A and Rs to you guys all the time. You're gonna deal with some of them in-house. Different fee schedules and maybe some deadlines. Again, nothing's in concrete yet. Once we actually have the language written out, we will distribute it to everyone with enough time for you guys to review it. And then at a future meeting, it'll be voted on.
Thanks for the heads up. Nothing more we need to do on that. No vote is needed. It was just an FYI on what's upcoming. Okay, so this will move us down to number six, amended approval for one fifty-six Main Street. Representative James Valeriani, sorry, said that incorrectly. Is the applicant?
He's moving over now. Jim, do you have anybody else on your team? If you're on the on this agenda item, if you'd use the raise your hand so I can move you over.
Yeah, we have, should have.
John's coming over. And that is all I see for your teams unless there's somebody else.
Yeah, there should be, Rob, just bear with us. There should be.
Ah, there's Victor. Check Sarah is coming over.
Hi, I'm, I'm joined with Souza, and I got Jose Ingrid here, here in my office with me.
Jose, is Victor joining?
He should be switching over shortly.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah, he should be there. There he is. All right, you may start.
Can I start?
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you, Rob, and Madam Chair, and good evening to the board and everybody else. Jim Valeriani with the Metzen Group, we're assisting the Elevation Group with their permitting for this retail establishment at one fifty-six Main Street. This company's been at this site, at pursuing the site in this project since the summer of two thousand and twenty. The company has its provisional license from the Cannabis Commission. We got a special permit in June, summer two thousand, no, it was November two thousand and twenty from the ZBA. Originally, we were going to go on the second floor. At that time, the zoning required that we be on the second floor in the C three zone. We, in January of twenty-one, we got site plan approval to be on that second floor. And keep in mind, the building takes up the entire lot. On-site parking is not required downtown. The company determined for various reasons, being at a competitive disadvantage being one, that they wanted to be on the first floor, retail on the first floor, and a downtown makes all sense. Retail on the second floor, in my opinion, and I think in the vast majority of property owners' opinions, makes no sense. They petitioned the city council and worked and obtained through a petition by one of the city counselors a unanimous vote to amend the zoning to allow marijuana on the first floor. Following that, we went back in front of the ZBA, obtained a special permit. I know Board Member Sweeney was on the ZBA at that time unanimously, unanimously approved with a minor condition that we spruce the place up, take down the cantilevered sign on the corner, which I think has been noticeable to the city for quite some time. And add some goose lighting, apparently goose lighting seems to be very popular with zoning and planning boards throughout the Commonwealth. I've seen quite a bit of that. So when, before we went to ZBA, you know, I had gotten in touch by email with the Building Department. I said, you know, what do we need to do to go back and get to on the first floor? I said, is it special permit in an email as well as, or could it be any type of site plan review? I didn't believe site plan review was required a second time. And we were informed, go and get a special permit, which we did. So a few months went by, the applicant, Jose and Victor of Elevation, applied for a building permit. And at that point in time, I guess it got recirculated throughout the departments as building permit applications mostly do with cities and towns. And the concern over site plan review being needed a second time was raised. I had some communication with Rob May on that. It was my strong position, even that position remains. As of now, that site plan review was not required for us to come back with this amendment for this change in location from the second to first floor. I say that because your site plan review prior to marijuana and maybe a couple of other uses only apply to the exterior of a building in the site, not the interior. And when you look at your zoning ordinance regarding marijuana, there are about a three or four items. None of them really refer to floor space or floor plans, and they don't apply to building elevations. That's only connect with new construction. However, Rob and I were able to move ahead rather than go through an appeal process, which would have wasted a great deal of time, money and expense. We decided, when we appreciate this, an amended modification filing, which we've done, the planning staff has reviewed this quite thoroughly. And I know the Fire Department, Ed Williams is on, as Deputy Chief Williams has looked at that as well. I believe he visited the site this week as well. So we know of no issues. Nothing has really changed. We're going to be on a smaller location on the first floor. It's about eighteen hundred square feet. John D'Souza at North County Engineers can go through that. We still have to get, after this approval, we have to pull our license from the city council. That's going to be another five grand. I mean, this company has been through five or six different herrings and multiple fees. And they haven't even gotten a building permit yet. Then we've got the cannabis fees, and I understand that's part of the process. But we really need to move ahead, this company. It's very been just in any way frustrating. So there'll be a post-provisional inspection by the Cannabis Commission. There'll be a final inspection by the Cannabis Commission. We've got to share final security and alarm plans with police and fire prior to use and occupancy. And we've got to share a waste management plan with your health department prior to use and occupancy. But there's no waste. It's all prepackaged marijuana products, very tight inventory control. There is very little surplus stock, very little product damage in retail marijuana. We, our, our service area will be downtown, and anyone who's in downtown area, when they're doing some shopping, visiting town offices, whatever. And we think it'll be a great addition. I think the Pretentus Building is, has had a number of tenants over the year, excuse me, over the year, service-related tenants. This would be retail. We think it'd be a great addition to the downtown. John can show the elevations, showing our proposed signage, which is in compliance with the assigned control. Do you'd like him to bring up the, the elevations and the plans? Would you like that?
Yes.
John, do you have the ability to share?
Uh, yep.
Okay, so that's, that's the Pretentus Building right now. We're showing the elevation signs centered above almost above the entrance to, that's a, that's a, that entrance in the middle leads to the right retail and the left elevation will be on the left under the Pretentus Plaza sign. And then the elevation sign on the side street. That is allowable. Would like to make use of that location as well for traffic coming up Main Street. We have agreed with ZBA to do some lighting. We're going to remove that cantilevered sign up on the upper right in the corner. And we're going to touch up the front, repaint as necessary, refurbish that Pretentus Plaza sign in place. And any of the awnings that are damaged will be repaired. They seem to be in good shape. Now, I know you have in front of you a recommendation from your planning department that the large window to the left under the Pretentus Plaza sign be removed and made to look like the other windows to the right. Now, that's something that we're not in agreement with. Neither is the owner. We don't believe it's necessary. I could tell you from my personal opinion, looking at it, the building looks fine to me. The window looks fine to me. Now, it may not be consistent with the downtown desire for the way the window should look, but that building's been, been there. That was a legal modification for a previous tenant. I reiterate that your, your board does not have authority over the exterior of a building unless it's new construction. And it's not something, we believe it to be very expensive. We see no need for it. I've consulted with the client and we're, we're not going to do it. And we're going to be it's, it's, we're agreeing to all kinds of other changes. And I don't know how else to, to put it. And you don't have the authority to require it. I wish I didn't have to kick this off like this, but which is very surprised we're being pushed to do something that is existing and it's going to cost, that's not going to be a two hundred dollar window, I mean. And the mar, the granite underneath there, that's been removed. It's not something that we have any authority over either. So Jose, why don't you go to the floor plans?
So this is what currently is out there as far as the floor. You can see that the entryway, the covered entryway is right here. And then there's a single entry point that swings in, which under the code has to be changed out to swing back. When you go in, there's another door, just right here to the upper portion of where the column is. Then it's got the older receptional area right in here. Then they have your, the exam rooms or the workrooms that was previously worked for. On this side, they had storage over on the other side. There was a small bathroom for the employees right here, which is going to remain. And a handicap bathroom right here that is also going to remain. Then on the backside, there was basically the internal office or the back office for the, the operation. And then this back and here is basically almost like a storage room that also had access to the upstairs and more than one person had access to this. So what's going to happen is we're basically going to go in, we're going to remove this old entry door here, and we're going to put in a new entry door, whether it's a sliding door or the, either store that swings out. So we'll have to reform the code. This old wall here is coming out. That door is coming out as well. We're going to remove a lot of the old walls that were up for the and also where the storage rooms were. The bathrooms, we're staying basically where they are. Touching those. And then we're going to revamp the area where the back office was. So this here shows the proposed floor plan. We currently have a proposed slider, but from what I understand with the walkover, the Fire Chief was we have to look at the, the best view on, on the door to make sure that whatever we proposed worked. So that is something that we're going to be doing. But you're going to come in, you're going to go into a secure area. We've got a, a security office right up here in the front. So you're going to have to show your ID at this point. And once you show your ID, this door here is, gets buzzed and you walk into and you're in the waiting area. Then once you're clear to go into the floor, you're buzzed through this other, next security door, and then you go into the store. One of the previous revisions we had, we had some shelving up in this area. And there was a question in regards to the, the backside of the shelving. What was there? And what it was was just basically another false, false wall. So we extended the shelving to go all the way back to where the stair wall is on that side. Then you come up and you got your floor area, and then you got your, your washes right in on the right inside. You got the two bathrooms still right here. It still has all the access to the patrons and to the employees. Then once you walk through this secure door here, there's a mechanical room on the left. There's a prep room on the left, and the vault is up on the left as well. Then we have an office on the other side on the backside. Then we have online, the, the sales area, which is basically its own small office. Then we have the entryway into the break room, which is on the backside of where all the peel buses are. One of the other comments that we had was we previously had the two entry doors here, the control point. And we actually removed those from there so that way anybody that was upstairs can gain access without having to go through our security doors, and we moved them to the back portion right here. So we now have the secure doors on the backside. And this hallway will be here, so there's full access to go upstairs in the basement from the other this here is basically the cameras. So all the cameras pretty much stayed where we previously had them. But it shows that we have full coverage of the whole floor and also on the outside at the exit points as well. So we'll have full coverage for the whole space. And then we have all the control points and who has access to what doors. So the green is basically what's known as a common access. So all employees have green cards that they can punch in. They, they automatically go through any of the doors that's in green. Admin access is the red, so you need to have some sort of security clearance with the owners of the operation to gain access into those rooms, like the mechanical room would be one, the security office up in the front is another, online sales is another, and the prep room is another. Then you got the supervisor admin access. So basically, this is the controlling entity, their access points. So they'd have access to the control entry on the backside, the vault in the of the, of the building. And everybody else's, your questions from there, I'd be more than glad to answer.
I think that's about it, Madam Chair. Again, the building takes up the entire lot and
But I'll open this up for the planning board. So would you agree that this property, this location on Main Street is a focal point of Main Street?
Smackdown Downtown, I'll agree to that, and I'll also agree that Smack down downtown, I'll agree to that. And I'll also agree that a photo of it is uh pictured prominently in your town's redevelopment. Uh, your city's redevelopment uh 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 plan, which is quite lengthy. Uh, I you know, I hope my bluntness about that window didn't rub people the wrong way, but we've come a long way and uh we 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 don't see the need for the expense. We don't need to have it done. And again, I.
So thanks for answering my first question. Um, and I I'm glad to see that the counselors did a change the ordinance and allow you to move your operations downstairs because that's gonna save you huge expenses from being on the second floor. And we um, I personally know that these businesses are in for big profits as well. Um, in addition, I think you're aware that the planning department and other committees have been working very hard to improve the uh looks of our downtown Main Street area, bringing in solid credible businesses and just to improve what the city of Brockton looks like, especially on Main Street because it's been an eyesore for many, many years. Um, so I am surprised that you blatantly said that you would not uh change that window when you know that is something that we're going to suggest and that we want. Um, it's a little surprising to me because you are going to be saving tons of money from operating upstairs. And I also do think that it is within our authority to make this a condition, just for the record. And if I'm wrong about that, Mr. May, please correct me.
Um, it is something that we have been asking for. Um, you know, but it's not something that we can. It it's arm twisting, it's not holding a gun to their head.
You know, if I may, Madam Chair, uh again.
We can't, we can't force them.
I regret I regret my bluntness. I saw the memo from planning. We thought we had worked through a a lot of uh the concerns with the exception of that. Uh, I will say, and I think everybody knows, and I'm not trying to use COVID as an excuse every time I'm trying to get something passed aboard. But COVID has hit uh all uh commercial properties, in particular uh tenanted properties. They're hurting. Okay, the economy is about to potentially go into a recession. We've got a company that's been working for three or four years, expended tens of thousands of dollars. And you know, here we are at what is a a questionably required hearing that we said we would go through to ex. What are we gonna do? Appeal this to the Z B A? And then go to Superior Court because we want to fight over conditions? We're asking for that condition not to be imposed. Uh, it wouldn't surprise me one bit if it is imposed, if it makes the project very difficult to move forward. We don't know what the expense of that window is gonna be. We don't know what the expense of that elevator was gonna be, if that's what's on people's minds, getting that operational for them to have gone on the second floor. It never had to be engineered. We knew it was gonna be expensive. But I don't think it's fair to say, well, you're saving money on the elevator since you're not going on the second floor and therefore we're gonna we're gonna uh extract a concession from you now that you're going on the first floor retail. I will say I think you the board is is outside of its authority and uh would be, we 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 kindly request that that condition not be imposed.
So I wasn't just referencing the elevator, but I'm glad you brought that up. I'm talking about overall operations, not looking at the bigger picture, operating on the second floor cost, you know, it's more uh labor intensive, transporting up and down. It's 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 more inconvenient for your customers. You're gonna bring in more foot traffic on the first floor than the second floor. So I'm looking at the bigger picture and I'm hoping that you will consider putting in a window that matches along Main Street with the other storefronts so that we can continue to make the city of Brockton look better and appear prettier. Um, I'm gonna use that word prettier and attract more people to the city of Brockton. I think it will also attract more people to this business. Um, I am on the business side and operations side in my company, so I'm thinking along these lines for you as well. It's not just for the window, but also for your own operations and your finances. It's a reasonable request, a window.
Uh, I see, uh an expensive window, Madam Chair. I mean, if this.
The window costs, so I I don't think you can say that. It's a window.
I I have no doubt that's at least a five thousand dollar project, maybe seventy five hundred. Now, if this board wants to consider a a a reasonable condition where perhaps in five years after the company's actually making a profit, this can be revisited. I could tell you, I've got the owners here and they're gonna wanna speak on this too, Madam Chair. I'm glad this is on local cable TV. I really am.
Was I? Um, if I may, um, so uh I I understand that, you know, everybody uh on the planning board is trying and they want this uh pretentious plaza to be uh. I I love beautiful building. I would like to see nice building. I I like to be there and see nice building. But what do you, what the the plan is asking from us, we don't have no authority to do that. We have to go back with the owner now to ask the owner to make any change. We, when we request to rent this but but the the space there on the second floor, because it was the ordinance that was written saying, okay, you can only be on second floor. We probably wouldn't be in this situation if it wasn't for that. Okay, be that's beside the point at this point. I understand that now we're requesting to be on the first floor, which um I agree, you want the building to be uh in certain ways, certain why is it that we have to go through the motion because we're trying to rent the place to have the owner do it? Why don't the city of Brockton with all the zoning board or any member of the city or any council on the city, why not approaching the owner to come up with the resolution about?
That's a good point, Jose, because this building under your master plan for downtown is a candidate for grant money. So maybe the city of Brockton can find somewhere in its budget to issue, say, ten grand in grant money to have the window done.
Madam Chair, it's Larry.
Yes.
Can we go back to that front elevation and take a look at that window and get a better look at it because we kind of glossed over it and then it was just mentioned that they weren't gonna do it. And attorney Valerie had mentioned that maybe given some kind of a condition to allow it to be suspended for a certain amount of time and then have it taken care of. Maybe they can work that out with the owner over time. I'm somewhat amenable to that, but I'd like to see that front elevation again if we could.
Sure, that's a good idea. And I don't think that uh this plan's been in work for a while, so it would it could have been brought up with the owner earlier for permission to change the window. Um, so it's not like it's a surprise. Please pull up the plan so that um floor to remember. Larry, I can ask you some questions, please.
Could you zoom in on that, please?
Yeah.
From here, terrible eyesore.
So we're talking about the window right there.
That's when it was formally wrong.
Right.
Correct.
My understanding, it's the bin the window on the left under the Pretentus sign that you.
Yeah, that's what I thought, further to the left, correct? Right.
It's the old Brom Jewelers information. Um. Madam Chair, if I could, as you um uh see on this sign, um, there is a um a a sign on the second floor that they will be removing. It's a a former sign that needs to come off of the building. Um, they're going to repair the awnings. And there are um dropdown um grates that they are removing. And if the board wanted to uh have them come back in five years and take a look at um a storefront improvement uh um and working with the B R A on their storefront program, I think that that would be um acceptable. But in the meantime, uh, I'll let other people on, you know, you're you're questioning the board right now. And then um councillor Lally would like to uh address you before the public comments. So I'm I'm done.
Sure, I don't have any further questions about it. I I feel, I understand both sides of this, and I think in fairness to the applicants and maybe the city dealing with the owner and giving them a little more time to yes, their business rolling and then and then address it in some some form of manner. That's I'm I'm okay with that because it it honestly, I literally just walked by there like two days ago. I was stopping over at the uh Alberba's Coffee Shop and I didn't even pay attention to that. So I wish I had took a a better look. But um.
That would be, yeah, I'd be on board with that. Sorry, I'd be on board with that, too. I think that's that's fair.
I think councillor Lally has his hand raised, so I'm sure there's something maybe he has to say about it. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Alright, so there's no other further questions of the.
Uh, Madam Chair, I I do. Um, as far as the lighting scheme, just so we were crystal clear on it, I was just hoping they could elaborate on what that meant to them. And I know they said lights, but I would like to see what their interpretation is of that.
Well, I at the at the Z B A hearing, uh, Mr. Sweeney, uh, back in uh July, it was uh we didn't, we didn't have light shown on the elevations. Uh, it was something that was asked uh by the Z B A when they approved five to to nothing. We assumed that meant gooseneck lighting if that was uh uh i- consistent with the type of lighting that the city has been seeking downtown. Now, I I think that's all you can really do there because it would have to extend yeah, over the sidewalk, over the public way, but it's just lighting. Uh, we could put a number of gooseneck lights up along the front. I I think that's the solution. Um, I don't know how else we could achieve uh, you know, increased lighting. We want lighting for security purposes. That's for Don and Cheryl.
Uh, in in any of that, is that gonna touch the upper floors? It like the like Brockton Beer Company in the Sycamore?
No, it would be downcast, gooseneck, and it would probably be mounted either maybe above the signs to give them uh some uh some illumination. Uh, if that's possible or below, uh wherever it's possible to mount, and we're happy to take suggestions from the planning department on on typical lighting that's downtown.
I I I mean, my suggestion on the Z B A was was directly uh from how, you know, the Sycamore building looks.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I do recall you suggested we do something similar to whatever Sycamore Building is doing.
So that would mean the entire, the 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 front side on Main Street and uh the what that's what West Chestnut, not Ch- oh, West Chestnut, um West Elm uh right there or East Elm, I guess, on that's on that side. Um, you're right. So that would all be touched with lighting as you see on uh the Sycamore Building was my recommendation. That's kind of why I wanted to hear what that inter- what that interpretation was.
I mean, if it's reasonable, we'll do it. I mean, I think it should only extend around the front and wrap around to the end of the retail windows. I don't think it needs to go all the way down the side of the building. Uh, there were streetlights, uh, but you know, I mean, if it's it's not it's not cost prohibitive, they'd like lighting as well.
Um. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, just for clarification in in talking with the applicant, the sign that you see, this is Elevation Dispensary, those are backlit channel letters. So they will be, you know, a three D letter that sticks out from the wall and has light illuminating the inside of the of the letter. The um gooseneck lights would be appropriate for um the line, a a line of them right above the awning as it rolls up and that would shine down on both on the building and on the um sidewalk.
Okay, is that Plaza sign staying there that's to the left?
Yeah, so we were gonna touch it up.
Alright, um. James, anything else?
Yeah, I I would, I would like to see the building have some, you know, again, this is what I had stated on the Z B A, some lighting touching upper floors on the on Main Street and uh on the on the small side. Doesn't have to be the entire side back. It can be from where your signage covers on that side. But that's, that's what, you know, what my interpretation was as part of, you know, that stipulation.
Yeah, it might be a simple LED strip uh right on top of the black.
I think that helped you out a lot, too, so.
I I um, I I don't see any uplighting as as a issue to do along the front and then just along on the uh the the side of the signage.
Okay, if there's no other questions from the board, um, we'll open up to councillor Lally.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to offer a bit of a point of clarification. Um, the city council did vote to, you know, approve the the moving of this from the second story to the first story. Um, basically because the initial rules that outlined where the retail marijuana locations are going, uh, were pretty much, they they just didn't, they didn't work out and we, they weren't, they weren't going anywhere. So it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, a any kind of um endorsement or anything more than it was fair is fair. Um, I I, you know, felt the need to just chime in the the window. I I'm not, I'm not, you know, dying on any hill with the window, but I I I did feel the need to come in and stress that, you know, the the planning board um is the, you know, duly designated and appointed board for matters like this. You know, we, as as they trust us to do our jobs, we trust them to do theirs. Um, and I I I don't, I don't know the the ins and outs of the operation of this particular business, but um, we're looking at at years, years since the city council uh acted on the license and acted on the uh approval to move from the second floor to the first um to the point where the council itself is was having a discussion just weeks ago about a couple of licenses, trying to figure out you know, where they are. Are they, are they holding these for some kind of value? When are they gonna open? They, you know, we're having the conversation where we're, we're looking around saying we have fourteen licenses and we've gone, you know, as 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 I'll measure it, um, uh, you know, a whole term uh at least without seeing anything happen in a couple of places. And we're, we're wondering if, you know, if we're seeing anything at all. So um, you know, just to, just to come in on, you know, on this, you know, we're, we're happy to see the business open. We're happy to see everything get up and running. Um, but I I was just taking a bit of back at the uh at the back and forth. Uh, the the back and forth towards the board's authority, but also the the tone in which it was held. So I I wanted to just clarify that as far as the city of Brockton and the city council is concerned, the appropriate authority in these matters is the board. Um, I I appreciate your time, Madam Chair, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, council. I was opening to a public comment.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise your hand uh function at the bottom of your screen. If you hover uh down there, a uh menu will pop up and you'll see a raise your hand icon that kind of looks like this. I apologize, I was doing uh double duty there. So uh I do not see anyone who would like to make a public comment. So, Madam Chair, back to you.
Okay. I did see a hand up.
And I just.
Yeah, you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Uh, well, my partner Jose pretty much put into perspective for you guys there uh about that window, but I don't want to add anything to it. Um, you know, if it comes around, you know, I I've been trying to get into this business over five, six years ago. Okay, uh. You know, I I've been trying to get into this business over five, six years ago. Okay, uh, like I was telling my partner, this is actually my last meeting. Okay, um, you guys had uh, other businesses using that spaces for years. It wasn't an issue, okay? Like Jose said, you know, if it was up to us, we would definitely change the way if we had to, but we don't own the building. Alright, uh, I don't see no problem with the window because the CCC has to go through it. And if if they see a problem with that window, they will address it with us and we have to make a change on that. Alright. Uh. Uh, I mean, I'm frustrated with this. I'm pretty much done with this. You guys can make whatever decision you want to make.
Okay, Victor, yeah, no, I understand. The 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 applicant, Madam Chair's. Multiple meetings for this. I appreciate Council Lally's comments. We'd like a favorable decision with the utmost uh, respect. And if if the window is, remains of uh, significance, we're hoping it can be. Uh, reasonably worded condition in which, you know, this can be revisited. Yeah, again, the company hasn't even. Made penny one and it's gonna take another. Six to twelve months to get to the final stages with the Cannabis Commission. It's a lengthy and expensive process. I know you've had other applicants in front of you that have made the same. Kind of statement, so. Uh. And we we request the approval and uh, thank you.
Um, just to explain a little to Mr. Texera, previous. Business owners were operating there. The business development of the city of Brockton is to improve on existing conditions, so that is why. The window should be improved, not because other businesses were using it that way and everyone should continue to. We're trying to improve on the city overall. Which will also help your business as well, along with all the other ones in the city of Brockton. I hope that helps clarify something for you. Um.
Uh, Madam Chair, I did text you some salient notes that uh, we would recap this conversation. And we do have one person in the audience who would like to speak now, if the public comment is still open. And Ms. Crowley. You should be able to address the board now.
Here?
Lisa, yes, we can hear you.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Uh, my name is. I, it sounds like this, this um, business owner has six to twelve months to go through the uh, the Marijuana Commission. Um, I think it's great. It's gonna be a great addition. I would love to get you guys in there and get open. But also remember, this is the downtown as well, so maybe everybody can work together over the next six to twelve months. And maybe look into the aesthetics of that window and the awnings, because we really want downtown to be a showcase. And we really want you guys to come in here and be successful. Um, so please, you know, keep it all in mind. You know, the board, you know, make their decision. Um, I agree with the Madam Chairwoman. We want to see it look nice. We really do and and. Please try and keep that in mind as you guys proceed. Thank you.
And you made a nice point, work together. Um, that's a key point. Thank you, Ms. Crowley. Anyone else, Rob?
I do not have any other public comments at this time.
Okay. Alright, so um, if there is a motion, there are some conditions. That we need to consider, definitely the lighting. Across the front. Mr. May suggested a strip LED and um, I'm hoping that the applicant. Would work with us and consider maybe after two years of being in full operations, after you're fully opened, within two years to. Revisit that window and um, replace it accordingly so that it matches the rest of the stores along Main Street. To help the city improve our appearance.
Okay, and we're also gonna apply for a grant as well, because again, the candidate is a, that belongs a candidate for grant money and we think that's a perfect.
Yeah, absolutely. However it gets done, it doesn't, it's it, as long as it gets done. Um, and I'm not looking to cause the applicant any more money, but we are looking at improving what the city looks like. So thank you for trying to work with us.
Um, somebody needs to make a motion?
Is there mo- is there a motion?
Do you want to add the steps after or?
Not the.
In the, in the motion.
The name of the product, the address and the conditions with your motion.
Motion to approve one fifty-six Main Street with the following conditions that. I guess we have to be really specific about this. So the the lighting that has been discussed, um, if you can. Help me with this, either Rob or Evan, on how you want that language. I mean, there was talk about. Goose neck lighting. There was also talk about an LED strip. Um, along with that window discussion to be determined with the applicant, the owner and the B R A and we. Allowed to ask that the owner of the building be involved in that as well?
Be involved in what?
I I would, I would think that the building owner would need to be involved. Um, but Larry, if if I could.
Go ahead.
To in insert in your motion, we talked about um, the ZBA wanted gooseneck lighting. I would think that they would need to be evenly spaced every ten to twelve feet across the entire facade. And the length of the sign on West Elm. Um, we had talked about above that, um, the black.
Uh. Right, the signage.
I I don't know what else to call that. Can it be an LED strip to wash the front of the building, upwash, and then um. Uh, we talked about two years to revisit the storefront.
Is. I mean, that's pretty clear. Is that okay with the applicant and their counsel?
Uh, yes.
Those are, those are the conditions.
The motion, second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Have a great night.
Moving on to amended approval two two three Thatcher Street.
I don't know if we have, if there's anyone to present this. I don't know if they have to present this. This is basically just um, amending. A previous approval again.
I'm sorry, that's me.
Okay.
Um, last year, the um, uh. Public Office for Urban Affairs, um, who is the developer of the convent property on Thatcher Street. Received a uh, forty R site plan review uh, approval. Um, and in the the conditions, it said that the application or the the approval was good for two years. However, our ordinance says that the conditions are good for three years. So we wrote that down wrong. We consider that a Scrivener's error and we just want you to. Uh, uh, accept that, that it's a three-year uh, approval.
Okay, so it's not to public discussion or?
No, it's just a Scrivener.
Alright, motion?
Motion to accept as a three-year approval?
Second.
Roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes, thank you. Alright, so we are now on site plan approval for Petronelli Way. The applicant is New Vision Enterprises with J K Holmgren, representative.
Kevin is coming over from BKA. Do we have the applicant himself? I don't see that, but.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, he was in a meeting, Rob. He was gonna try to make it.
Oh, yeah. Alright, you're both over.
Alright, uh, good evening, Madam Chair.
Or wait for Kevin.
Scott, you ready to go?
Yes, thank you. Good evening to Madam Chair, Board Members, Scott Farrier from Holmgren Engineering. But New Vision Enterprises, along with Kevin Patton from BKA Architects. And uh, what we have before you tonight is a site plan approval for property on Petronelli Way. Uh, immediately to the right of twenty-eight Petronelli Way that's currently under construction. Uh, the property is the, you know, the site of the, the big parking lot that's between Petronelli Way and Franklin Street. So we've had numerous meetings uh, with city officials. On this uh, on this project. We've uh, received ZBA approval in September. We've met with the planning board and BSC, uh, who is the city's consultant on uh, the roadway that'll directly abut this building. Uh, Haglo Way. Uh, we've gone to two tech review meetings and we, we think we're pretty much at the point now, Madam Chair, where we've. Uh, addressed everybody's concerns in in the city, in the uh, in the consultants and certainly the planning department. So. Uh, just a quick overview of the project. It's a, a proposed fifty-unit residential building. Uh, we have fifty parking spaces, twenty-five uh, ground level garage spaces. Uh, six spaces outside the property, nineteen uh, spaces that more than likely would be across the street at the uh. The city of Brockton parking garage from the Parking Authority. All of our utilities for the project will come in off of Franklin Street. Currently, there is no drainage on that massive parking lot. As part of our project, we are proposing. Stormwater management, so that's a a great improvement uh, for the neighborhood and and it brings us into stormwater compliance.
I'm sorry, Scott, I was trying to get in there. Are you, do you have a plan to put up for us?
Hate it when you ask that. I do.
Now, let's see if it goes up.
I'm gonna see something. Not yet.
You should be a pro at this by now. Rob can give you a hand.
Hold on.
You're starting to share your screen. We got it.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, so again, Petronelli Way, bottom of the screen. Uh, Marvelous Mount Marvin Haglo Way will be to the immediate right of the building. Uh, that's the. Uh, road that will be constructed, uh, designed by BSC that uh, that we're working with in in all of our meetings. So. Again, the the building itself, we have a, an entrance off of Petronelli Way to get into the the podium parking area and then an exit. Uh, off the side of the building, uh, to eventually exit out to Franklin Street. Uh, I think the, we've gone back and forth with the planning department, but a a big thing that they were concerned with was the amount of. Curb cuts on Petronelli Way and uh, coming up with a way to, to kind of decrease the amount of curb cuts there. So I I think we've done that to the. To the planning department's satisfaction with the uh, inclusion of all of this concrete sidewalk. Uh, right here in front of the building, there still will be a curb cut to get into the garage, a curb cut to get into the parking lot and a curb cut. Uh, that is the access easement out to Franklin Street that was part of the twenty-eight Petronelli Way. So there still are gonna be curb cuts, but we've. We've tried to soften that with the uh, with the advent of this uh, concrete sidewalk that we proposed, so. Uh, that's really a a quick overview, Madam Chair. Maybe I'll kick it over to Kevin. From BKA and he can give you a quick rundown on the, on the building design and amenities, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Um, is there a way that I could um, get or switch the screen share over to me?
Stop sharing, thankfully.
Alright, hopefully I'll have. A little luck here. Alright, can you see the screen?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I guess I.
See how that's done, Scott?
I guess I lose seeing all of you. Um, alright, so as Scott kind of laid out. The uh, orientation of the building on the property and the parking, uh, the building has. Is mostly over parking. There's um, very little ground floor constructed space. The, we do have a lobby, uh, entry lobby with a mailroom, elevator stairs that's accessed from the um. The six surface parking spaces through the door here and then the. Twenty-five garage spaces are accessed into the, to the lobby through here. We have a secondary uh, eager stair on Franklin Street. There's a trash area here with a door that, uh, you know, the bins will be rolled out for uh, when they're picked up. And then we have two utility spaces, a an electrical and water sprinkler space. And this is the, the garage access. There are opportunities here and there for uh, some planting beds. Um, and then we have the uh, the additional uh, garage entrance and exit out onto the uh, the one-way. Uh, access alley. The uh, floor plate, we have fifty units. There are um. Thirty-five one bedrooms and fifteen two bedrooms. The two bedrooms are in this kind of reddish color. And then the fifty, the um, one bedrooms are in the greenish color. They're all accessed off of a double O to quarter spine that runs the length of the building. And at the knuckle, um, where the inside corner uh, occurs, there's an amenity space. We've programmed this so that it would be a double height space, so it might be a really interesting place to be in there. Uh, and you'd access it from the third floor, uh, and maybe a a fitness wellness program. And then again, on the fifth floor. Where you also have a double height space, uh, could be a co, um, a coworking space or business space. Uh, this is a, a lighting plan, so we have our typical garage lighting, um, but we also, the second floor can leave is out over the. The first floor, so we have some uh, softits that will get downlights and they're located. Sporadically around the building as you follow my cursor. Um, they're on all four sides of the building, including Hagler Way. Uh, the elevations, the building is designed as a brick building with um, fiber cement panel accent. Uh, so on your screen, the dark area is being rendered as, as brick. Um, and these tall rectangular panel patterns are fiber cement. And then at the base, in order to increase the scale and give a, a bottom to the building, we've introduced a manufactured stone bands. Uh, the building is, is called Ringside. We're next to Petronelli. Um, so we've kind of. Uh, been working with the horizontal banding on the building. You also might, might notice a fun little pattern in here. These are required ventilation uh, openings for cross ventilation for the garages. However, we've filled them with a decorative metal um, grating. And um, I'm just gonna zoom in real quick. And we picked out a, a nice waterfall pattern, um. In our conversations with the planning department, we've tried to reinforce the, the sidewalk. Uh, and its volume or space by adding these uh, canopy um, elements over each one of those. All four sides are, are treated the same way as far as the building material and, and um. It's vocabulary. So the rendered view, uh, the lighter color is the brick. Uh, then we can pick up the banding around the base. We have a multi-colored uh, gray fiber cement panel system. We've articulated the, the fenestration uh, in the, in the brick areas where we have a single opening at the top. We've combined them in the middle two uh, pairs of floors. And then the single opening at the base, and this is just a play on scale to give some more interest to the building. Primary entrance to the building is, is located here at the knuckle. We have the Petronelli Way uh, garage entrance here and the uh, the alleyway entry and exit over here. You may pick up, it might be a little hard to see, but you may pick up uh, Juliette Alpines. Some of the units do have Juliette Alpines. Oh, um, before it gets picked up and commented on, I did not render the um. The sidewalk correctly that comes through here, so that is described properly on Scott's plans. This is a view of the building from Franklin and the, the access alleyway in here. The uh, entrance exit from the stair tower element that's here. Is located underneath a little projecting canopy and then we have the garage or uh excuse me, the trash. Uh. Uh entry exit located uh so that they build the barrels out to. A deeper sidewalk in this area uh waiting to be picked up for uh from the access alleyway. This is a view of the building of Hagler and Petronelli. And what we've done also to reinforce the whole idea of the horizontal banding is we've taken every other course of the brick. And recessed it one half inch, so it'll give a nice. Um rustic rustification to that that breaking creates some interesting shadow lines. And then down here, you can start to pick up the uh the canopy frames to help. Contain that volume of the sidewalk and reinforce um the use of the sidewalk and what it's like to be done. This last image, what I did is I uh placed the building model into a Google Earth. Uh three D model, which is why these buildings all look like they're made out of Play-Doh. Um but you have the the Hagler Way here, Petronelli here, Franklin is uh sorry, excuse me, right here. And we are sixty. Uh seven feet tall from the point of access at the main entrance. However, there's so much slope going along Petronelli and Franklin. You can see how the building really works with the uh the streetscape. Now, this is this Google image is prior to the construction of the garage and then the new uh Trinity residential building down here in the lower right-hand corner. And that's the overall of uh of the project from from the architectural.
Kevin, did you have a night shot?
Uh really.
Fortunately, I do not. Ones we saw.
Yes, I can absolutely produce that for you, Rob, and we can work through any additional lighting that you might think the city would uh would like to see on it.
Very nice.
Cause I know Jim had uh had issues with lighting and I think he had done a really good job with it and I wanted to show it off.
Uh I had one done for uh Main Street uh and you'll see that in a couple of weeks.
Ooh.
I'm looking forward to it.
Uh should I shut the the screen off or are we gonna refer to any of these drawings if there are any questions?
Uh planning board members, do you have questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could, uh the the plan looks really good. How deep are the sidewalks?
Right, so I'm gonna go all the way back uh. To and Scott might have some additional information, but what I want to point out here, when I zoom in. This is this line represents the property line. So I believe we have a overall six feet here, but I've kept the building back on Hagler. Um which I felt was important to allow this street to function a little bit better. On Franklin, Franklin's more of a utilitarian kind of street. Um it's more of a service-type street, so I did build up to to the property line. Uh so you have your your current sidewalk depth that's out there today.
All right, I think that works well. I think it looks a lot better, too. Um. I guess.
Then I guess maybe my. Added depth down on Petronelli. Um and we're trying to take advantage of some planting opportunities there.
Okay. And just my last question, you know, once you get approval, when when would you be shovel ready?
Well, as you know, BSC is doing the engineering on the street. That needs to get constructed. Uh Joe does not want to do any work prior to the street. Uh being done.
Okay.
Uh the Petronelli Building is nearing completion. Um and. Joe is also um putting in a a bid on another property in Brockton, so. He's gotta work through what what the priority is on that.
Okay. It wouldn't. Yeah, I think I think that kind of wraps it up for me. Thank you.
All right, Larry, anything?
Madam Chair, I'm just looking at some comments here, too. I don't know if the if this has already been cleared up, but there was talk about. The location and functionality of the sewer line, has that been? Um.
Yes.
On the plan, Scott?
Yes, we did. We uh yeah, we had the sewer going out to Franklin Street as requested.
Okay, thank you. That's all I see.
Scott, can you just show that to us real quick, though? Cause I know they asked you to separate it from the water line. But we were having difficulty figuring out where. Or for the uh, yeah, sorry, for the the drains in the garage. Uh but we're having difficulty trying to figure out where the sewer actually comes from and goes to.
Okay. Oh. Um everybody see this plan?
Yes.
Okay, good. So this heavy black line is the sewer line going out to Franklin Street. Uh. The so that is the sewer line that handles the runoff from within the parking garage. So the the parking garage, the trench drains in the garage want to be included into the municipal sewer, not into the onsite uh drainage system. So. We have uh trenches shown on the within the garage. They get piped uh on the garage floor. Into an oil-water separator, into a sewer manhole and out into the sewer line on Franklin Street. The uh domestic sewer, I'll call it, the the sewer for the units themselves, comes out of the utility room and ties into that sewer manhole. So it's a it's a separate line leading to the oil-water separator. Once oil-water separated dumps into the sewer manhole, then the domestic sewer can tie into that as well. So there's just one curb cut. Uh for the two different lines.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, Larry, before we open it up to public? Okay, Rob, anyone?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you have any uh comments, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And we will um open up your mic to be available to speak. And Madam Chair, at this time, I do not see anyone with their hand up.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
I don't see any uh any special stipulations on this. Am I correct?
It was only a a notation about, I think they it was mentioned, uh design details for the continuous sidewalk at each vehicle entrance and exit must be included in the plans. And I think Mr. Patton had mentioned something about that in his drawing. It wasn't on it, but Scott, it's on yours, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, so mo- motion to approve with design details for the continuous sidewalk at each uh vehicle entrance and exit must be included in plans.
Second.
Right, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, folks.
Hey, next we have a definitive subdivision for twenty-one Flint Road. We have Monte Construction as the applicant and J K Holmgren represented.
Again, Madam Chair, board members. I believe Attorney Burke is. Open to come on in this one as well, Rob.
I will move him up.
I got it.
Scott, you'll be ready with the plan? Please?
Hope so, Madam Chair.
I have all the faith in you.
Remember, Attorney Burke charges by the hour, so let's.
I've been enjoying listening. Uh it it Mr. Uh Madam Chairman and members of the planning board, uh this is a matter that you've seen before. Uh the developer brought forth a plan to the planning board with the request to go to the zoning board, which. Uh was uh met with some opposition uh and a part of that discussion. Uh resulted in a new plan based on suggestions provided by at least one of the planning board members. That was subsequently brought before you and it was authorized to go to the zoning board of appeals. We then made the trip to the ZBA. Uh we received a favorable decision based on this plan. And we're bringing it back to uh the planning board with the hope it will approve of the subdivision of the various adjustments. Uh that are created both of the existing lots to create lot A, lot B, and have a remaining lot C and D. C and D are uh still meet the zoning requirements uh with the transfer. And the uh variances that were granted were for dimensional issues related to lot A and lot B. So Scott has presented the plan and I'll let him produce it, but there's our hope that you will in fact approve the subdivision.
Your attorney Burke, as uh Madam Chair, board members, as Attorney Burke said when we were before you folks. I believe it was back in August. Uh I think the the one comment we had, we had a lot line here for lot A. That kind of cut right behind the house, so it was suggested that we uh kind of fatten that up a little bit, which we did. Uh we went from, I believe, the previous plan, we had about ten thousand square feet on this lot A. Which is the existing house number twenty-one Flint. We uh bumped the lot out, so it's in line with lot B. So that lot now has twenty-four thousand five hundred. Uh that was one of the. I believe, conditions that you folks had in your uh preliminary decision, and that's the uh the layout that we brought before the Board of Appeals. So I think that uh I think that addressed adequately the the concerns the board had at that time.
Thank you. I'll I'll open it up for the planning board. Um is has the driveway on lot B? Been reduced to twenty feet or less?
We bumped it down to sixteen feet, Madam Chair. Suggested by uh by Howard Newton.
Thank you. Uh planning board members?
Yeah, we've seen this a few times. I don't, your question was just answered about the driveway, so I don't I don't have any questions about this.
All right, James, anything?
Yeah, I'm I'm good with it, too.
Okay, public um comment, Rob?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you have a public comment um or question, please use the raise your hand icon and we will open up your microphone. And I have one comment. And uh if you would state your name and your uh and and address for the record, please.
I hope you're gonna hear me. My name is Anna Maria Cubis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening. Uh I am I am the owner of um. Uh Seven Flint Road, which I am next to this uh gentleman who is uh planning to. Uh build a house. Uh my only worry is that um when he spoke to me a couple of times. He mentioned that he planning to build a house next to his. Um from what I receive from you. That he's dividing the property to four lots. My question is, is he planning to build a four houses? And now, when I'm looking uh seeing the lot number A. Uh how the lot gonna have access? Uh from what side? So I am the one on the corner, on the bottom on the screen.
Scott, this is only two lots, correct?
If yeah, if I could address that, Madam Chair, to. To make the to make the lots work, we're basically creating four new lots. Three of those lots have existing houses. Lots C and D have houses out on East Street. Those lots had almost two acres of land, all of this backland heading pretty close to Flint Road. Uh lot A, our new lot A, is the existing house number twenty-one. So the only lot that will be new, the only new uh lot that'll have a house on it is this lot right here, lot B. Which will have a driveway off of Flint Road. So the existing house number twenty-one Flint has their existing drive. Uh right here, Madam Chair, that's remaining in the same location. It'll just be this new house on lot B. So it is a a creation of four lots, but out of the four lots. Uh there are three existing homes on those four lots, the one on Flint, the two on East Street.
Okay, thank you.
So if I may add something, so the lot numbered uh lot lot B. That's the only lot uh when uh the owner planning to build the house, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other hands, Rob?
No other hands, ma'am.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. James Sweeney?
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
We thank the board for its time. Thank you, folks.
Okay, bye bye. Uh next up, we have the definitive subdivision of twenty Winter Street. P. Joy Elias is the applicant with J K Holmgren. Scott, we just are not going to miss you tonight, are we?
Well, luckily, I'm I'm quicker than the first one, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I've already missed supper, so I'm trying to go fast. So again, Scott Faria, Holmgren Engineering. Uh this application, Madam Chair, if I can show it, is. Uh a a plan that we had before you, uh property owned by Pedro Elias. Mr. Elias and his family uh live at twenty Winter Street. And it's it's kind of a a strange situation. They they have their existing house on twenty Winter Street. Uh they also, their lot encompasses, I guess what you would call some backland uh that front fronts on Merit Ave. Uh so we came before you folks. Uh again, back in October for a preliminary plan to divide the property, his existing thirty thousand square foot lot into two lots, shown as lots A and B. The uh you folks granted preliminary approval, which allowed us to go to the Board of Appeals. The interesting thing with the Board of Appeals is the existing home. On twenty Winter Street and all of the lots on Winter Street are in an R-two zone. Uh which has different uh zoning requirements, zoning requirements of only seventy-five hundred square feet of area. Uh the land, the backland, and all of the other lots on Merit Ave up to Oscar, all are in an R-one C that require a thirty thousand square feet. So uh we came with this plan that you're looking at to you folks in October. We went to the ZBA in November. ZBA granted uh approval for the lots as shown, so we'll be creating. Uh a new lot B that'll uh be the site of a a single-family home that Mr. Elias and his family will. Uh will be building and moving into and then they'll uh they will sell lot A. Uh so I I'm sure you folks remember, we had a little bit of a discussion with you folks at at the preliminary meeting about. Possibly connecting Merit Ave uh back out to Winter Street. Uh I you know, I I don't think it was. I don't know that anybody really had a a a real big opinion on it. Uh it it was kind of floated out there. We said we would uh we would look into it. When we got to the Board of Appeals, the the Board of Appeals uh after hearing from the neighbors was was pretty clear that they did not want to see Merit Ave. Continued out to Winter Street. Uh so that's uh the reason why we we didn't do that at all. Uh as was discussed at the planning board meeting previously, so Winter Ave currently dead ends uh about a hundred and thirty feet from Winter Street. It'll remain that way. Uh the one comment that we are a couple of comments that we did get from Howard Newton. Uh he was concerned just with Merit Ave in this lower location. It's kind of a flat area. Uh doesn't really have any drainage, so he asked if we could include a little bit of drainage, so we've added. Try to zoom up. We added two catch basins uh in front of our new lot. That will tie in to a manhole, tie into the existing city uh drainage system, so uh that'll help out with the any drainage. Uh out on Merit Ave. Uh besides that, Madam Chair, we have an infiltration system proposed for the new house. Uh it's a uh a home with a a two-car garage, uh driveway leading up to it. Uh I think everything else has been addressed, ma'am.
That's that's my understanding, too. Any questions from the planning board, Larry?
I I don't have any question. I'm just looking at um a couple of things, but I think he's somewhat addressed it. Um. There is a fire hydrant. We don't need another fire hydrant. I saw some notes about that. Is that that you clear on that, Scott? And also just a note about. Once the cast catch catch basins are completed, they'll repave. Cause they're gonna do a little bit of digging and excavating on those areas, correct?
Right, exactly. Yep, we'll have some some trenches there for the sewer, the water, and now for the drainage as well.
And there was a fire hydrant already on Merit, right? Cause there was.
Yes, sir, directly across the street.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, that's all I had for.
All right, uh James?
I think um those are my questions, too.
All right, thanks. Uh Rob, public comment?
Ladies and gentlemen, those wishing to make a public comment, and here we have Counselor Lally. Ladies and gentlemen, those wishing to make a public comment, and here we have Counselor Lally. Who I will promote, anybody else who has comments, please use the raise your hand icon, so that we can open up your microphone. Counselor Lally.
Thank you for the promotion, Mr. Director. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'll be very quick. The primary concern that I had gotten from constituents who live on Merritt and constituents who live on Winter was they were very thoroughly opposed to connecting Merritt to Winter. So with that addressed, their their major concern was out of the way. So I do thank the the developer for adapting to that. And that was really, that was really what they had, so I I do appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Rob, any other hands?
Madam, there are, Madam Chair, there are no other hands up at this time.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Standard conditions.
Thank you, Larry. All right, roll call, James?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes, thank you. We'll have your dinner, Scott.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Okay, now we are on to definitive subdivision, Arthur Estates. Rockwood Realty Realty Trust is the applicant, and we have Jacobs Driscoll Engineering. And before we start, we did get an email from Deputy Chief Edisson T. On. He had multiple meetings tonight, so I'm not sure if he's.
No problem.
Yeah, he said he'll be listening in, but he might not be able to actually talk to us.
Okay.
No, no, no problem, I'm on the next one, actually, I'm on another one now. All right.
I'm here, Madam Chair.
All right, good, thanks.
Is David Doyle a part of your team, or is he in a butter?
I think he's in a butter.
He's in a butter, Mr. Director.
Well, I'll, we'll wait until after the presentation. Thank you.
Who's presenting?
Phil, I believe you would.
I thought Mr. Driscoll was going to be on.
Sure, sure.
Or Ed Jacobs.
I'm not sure if Ed Jacobs will be joining us, but Greg definitely has some items he'd like to talk about with the board.
I mean, the the sum is, and before Greg takes over, I think that we left last meeting. The board actually suspended to get clarification on some points. And hopefully, they got that clarification, and we're just here to in furtherance of that.
Yeah, that was my understanding as well, I could put the plans up, but my understanding was that the the board wanted to reach out to the engineering department for some two questions that they had on that side, and we provided some info to the city engineer in the meantime. Haven't seen anything.
We did get clarification and confirmation that drainage issues are the jurisdiction of the engineering and the stormwater authority, so that, that was helpful. So you did do a full presentation last week, if you don't have anything new to add. You don't have to just go through the whole presentation just to do it, you let us know.
I mean, yeah, I could put the plans up if you'd like to see them, but otherwise.
Plans up and see if the board members have any questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There was a question related to the groundwater. We have submitted additional documents provided by the DEP from local well logs. It showed the groundwater and the bedrock depth. And I believe that was one of the chief concerns with the planning board, although we had addressed that, or a lot of that with conservation. But we did submit that, I believe Greg submitted that to the engineering department, if I recall.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions, James or Larry?
I don't, I don't have any questions at this time.
I don't either.
Again, that was one of the concerns, was whose authority was, or who needed to be concerned about the drainage issues in the water. So again, that is, so for the public comment coming up, that is the jurisdiction of the engineering and the stormwater authority. It'll be addressed there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Where, it just a notation that I'm just reviewing too, so I mean, their final approval will be contingent on receiving a stormwater permit, right? That's, that's what I'm seeing, the notations from the staff.
There are two, two waivers.
Right.
For this meeting here, there's wait, two waivers.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
The two waivers that we requested, one was the length of the road. I just want to note that the road is currently 1,300 feet, we're increasing it 150 feet. The town, the city of Brockton built the road to 1,300 feet as a dead end. I've never had a project approved as a dead end, every town wants a cul-de-sac for emergency vehicles to turn around. And I feel like we're improving the situation that's there now, and I know that the last meeting. The current landowner said that he leaves the gate open to make it easier for plowing and the trash pickup. Which seems like a nice gesture for him, considering the liability that could be. But by putting a cul-de-sac there is going to permanently improve that. And secondly, the sidewalk is the other waiver, which we are continuing the sidewalk on one side of Arthur Street. As Greg showing on the plan, which I would reference looking up on Arthur, that's the right-hand side. On the left-hand side. Where the yellow erosion control starts. It's all wooded right there, and I went by there last week, I'm not sure neighbors or whatnot, but everybody throws all their debris there. And there is no sidewalk maintained in this area, so that's why we're asking for the waiver, because it's not even used on, on this area. So I'm not asking for something that I I would anticipate people would use, I feel like putting it on this, the right-hand side of the road is more than adequate. And it services both of the homes that we're proposing. So I just want, I just want to bring people up to speed that might not be you guys have a lot of things ahead of you, so I just figured I'd address that.
Thank you. Okay, Rob, a public comment?
First, let's start.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
First, let's start with Counselor Lally, who is already in as a panelist.
Thank you, Mr. Director, thank you, Commissioners. You know, I'm, I'm back, I'm, I'm here to sort of restate both my concern and my opposition to the project, as well as the constituents I represent. Their concerns and their opposition as well. The simple fact is that it, this isn't something that you know, the folks around the area, at the very least, have a lot of faith in. Because we we go back to it being built on top of a spring. You know, the people around that area who, you know, I see and I talk to, who either call me about this, or I've gone and 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 met with. Everybody's got pumps, everybody's already got water in their basement, they already have these problems, which could only really be worsened by this development. On top of that, you know, it's it's less of a water comment, I know you want us to stay away from it, but I think it's important to mention. There is a significant historic and cultural connection with this property and the village as a whole, we're looking at a property that you know, was, was a place that people throughout the entire village. They've all got stories, they've all got memories, it's, it's got a a significant thing, it really should be looked at more of as a historical site, and a place to build a couple of houses that are, you know, really identical to a lot of the construction that we see. Everywhere right now. It's, it's something that the, the neighborhood has been, you know, very unified in their message on. They have concerns, they have problems they're already grappling with. They have, you know, no appetite or interest for this kind of disruption in the neighborhood. And on behalf of the residents and as the counselor and as, as a resident of the ward. I just want to express my concerns again and my opposition, and, you know, put my faith in the board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm not, Madam Chair, Mr. Lally has continuously stated statements that are not true. There is zero historical value to this property, it's private property, at no point should anybody have ever gone on that property. When we first went to the zoning board, he told all his constituents constituents that we were connecting the road, when in reality, we had this plan for the, the board to review. And anybody in the public could take a look at it, and we never proposed to connect it. And he's talking about water, which we've addressed at every single meeting. And he's never even looked at any of the documents, and he says the same thing every time. It's not fair that we have to come back, and he says the same thing when we've addressed it, and my professionals have addressed it. These engineers go to school for years to get their license and be able to put their, their skill on paper, and somebody comes in and makes false accusations, that's not fair. So I I feel like we've addressed Mr. Lally and Ms. Dubois's concerns, which seems more political than factual. So I'm not used to that, I know you guys do, this is, you guys are on the planning board of Brockton. But in other towns I work on, this is not a political forum, and that's how it feels like they've used it, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mr. Lally did have his hand up, or excuse me, Counselor Lally had his hand up. I don't know if he wants to rebut, but there are two other butters who would like to speak. The first is Douglas Wedge.
Mister, Mister May, and I'm sorry, this is Ed Jacobs, PMP, I have my hand up, I don't know if you're ignoring me or what.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed, I didn't.
That's all right, I just want to say, and I I agree with the owner, and and the reason I have my hand up is, this is our third meeting. And the same butters keep talking about the same issues. I mean, at some point, the chair, the chairwoman, with all due respect, needs to just say, we've heard enough of this. Unless you have something new to bring up, and something we haven't heard before, there's no sense bringing it back up. We're just going to give the same answers, which are based on fact, I don't understand why this just keeps getting dragged on.
We do have to open it to public comment, and I agree that if we can't hear redundant comments. But if somebody wants to do a refresher, a brief refresher, but please no redundant comments from anyone with their hands up.
Mr. Douglas Wedge, your microphone should be open.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, a couple of points, that gentleman that said there's no historic value. Well, prior to their ownership and their involvement, there is historic value. So he's speaking from the time he's been involved. He's not a city lifelong resident as I am, and so he has misstated that. Also, the fact that we're concerned about the blasting that we'll have to take care. Because I have property that adjoins that, we're on ledge.
We've heard this.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry? Did someone say something?
Continue, Mr. Wedge.
No, let's continue.
The fact, the ledge will have to be messed with, is definitely going to have an effect on the water. Because if you're not drawing water from a spring slash well. That water will sit there, and rain like tonight, or worse, will then sit on top of it and cause problems for the residents. We all have seen what climate change is doing to the water levels. And more intense weather, this is not the time to be doing that. If we're addressing the same things, it's because the builder and the owner and the attorney do not get the opposition and the reasons for the opposition. Might I also say, they're saying that's an improvement, that's their opinion. Not the countless butters and neighbors who feel it's not an improvement. Also, there is nothing to stop this group in the future to make some sort of waiver or attempt to go to zoning board to get some change in frontage to build more houses on the cul-de-sac. That's my brief statement, I am absolutely opposed to this. As so many of the neighbors are, as you have seen at many of the meetings, it is not necessary. We have taken an awful hit up in our area for clustering houses on top of each other. This is not a necessary project, this will not improve Brockton. And there is a historic nature to that, I can remember as a child going up and filling glass jugs with water when it was owned by Simpson Spring. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wedge, Mr. Doyle, hang on just a second. Mr. Doyle, you should be able to speak now. Yes, we can.
Very good, good evening, folks on the panel, and Driscoll Engineering, Rockwood Realty, and their attorney. We've been through this a lot, you know, I've mentioned about that there's animals, deers, and everything else that lives up there. But the biggest thing is the water up there, I get flooded out after, you know, my pumps come on after about three inches of rain. You know, any engineering or anything that they've done has been through their own people, it hasn't been done through an independent thing. The people on the street here can't afford to hire their own independent person, the town, or the city can either. What's basically going to happen is, you know, once when they leave and they get these houses built up, there's any water that comes, additional water that comes into these basements. You know, people are going to have to hire lawyers to go back after them for any damages. The other thing that's come up that I've just noticed is on the environmental part. The US Fish and Wildlife Department back in December has put up that there are certain woodpecker species that have become the endangered species protected. There are woodpeckers that live up there, I don't know what the species is, I never could see them, but I hear them first thing in the morning and then around suppertime. The morning one is a pain in the ass, but anyway. You know, we're just tired of this, it's been going on since last summer, this whole thing. The people have to keep on fighting to stop this project. The other conditions I've got to ask is, I don't know if they've said that they would or not. The part of Ridge Street that comes down to Merton, and Merton that goes up to and thing that they would not build on that, that's one of the conditions, along with some type of a buffer, I know.
I'm sorry, David, you dropped out.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, what I was saying about the last part, meeting that we had, was about the the unfinished part of Ridge Street and the Merton that goes up to Blossom and to Kerry Hill Street. I don't know if that was put under a condition or not, that they wouldn't touch that, along with some type of a buffer zone. But I'm just asking that, the people on Ridge Street, the people that connect to Merton Street, I don't know how the people on Blossom Street feels, but you know, they're going to be dynamiting up there, there's no question, I've lived up here for years, the pool that was put in next door to me at number 60 Ridge Street. Just as I was moving back in 85, they had a dynamite, there's a house, I think at 90 Merton Street, which kind of a bust that property. They had a dynamite the road to get the utilities in on Merton Street. It's just ridiculous what the neighbors have to go through, I'm asking the board to vote this down. Thank you.
Next person is Mr. Ed Rose, hang on. Mr. Rose, you should be able to address the. Mister Rose, you should be able to address the group now.
Alright, this is Ed Rose, Rocky Mountain Spring Water, um, Adam Chairman, I just wanted to say I've been listening to the folks, and I appreciate the neighbors' concerns, but the, what the board needs to know is a few things. A Simpson Spring never on the site, Blue Hill Springs on the site, and it has been a water supply for many, many years. And a good one at that, when they built the two houses up on North Carey Street, which is property owners, we never got notified of that, they sent it to a wrong address. Those two houses that received waivers from the appeals board contaminated that well, so whatever historical value there was to the well, and make no mistake about it. As a drinking water supply, we would have preferred to leave that site open. We've owned that site since nineteen ninety-eight, it was a fantastic water site, albeit very, very small. Right now, it is a useless water supply, you, it is no longer potable, it is no longer permitted by the DEP. So as a water supply, there is no historic value to it, because it can't be used for potable drinking water. That's number one, number two, I provided this team with DEP public record well logs. It shows that elevation of where groundwater is and where ledge is, okay? They're confusing groundwater and spring water, our spring is coming up through fractures of bedrock. It could be coming from four hundred feet below the surface, what the well logs up there show from DEP, this is all this is all public record, bedrock is at fifteen feet, I believe, in the ground, or sixteen feet, and the groundwater was similar. There is a lot of runoff up there, but it has nothing to do with the groundwater up there. And second, and third of all, when we bought the property, as everyone is very well aware, Merton Street is already a permitted road. It was never improved, it's a dirt road. That can be built out as of right, which would make all of these lots on Merton Street, which we're calling Arthur Street, is A and R permitted lots. I went to Jason when we went to him a year ago, and I asked him that the neighbors did not want it cut through. That they would, if we're gonna do anything, which now I'm forced to do something, because I can't use it as a drinking water supply. So I have to sell the property, I have no choice. It's just can't sit vacant like it has for the last year, so I told him to put a cul-de-sac in, rather than connect the road. If I had known there was gonna be so much opposition and so much foolishness on a simple on a simple circle, and that's all this is, is a simple circle, I would have built the road myself. And then not gone in front of any boards, because I would have had all A and R lots up there, which I still can do. But I'd prefer to see this simple cul-de-sac approved, because this gentleman, Jason, is a quality designer. He's a quality home builder, and I picked him specifically, because he'd do a nice job in that neighborhood. And I have owned that property for almost thirty years up there, and we've been good stewards of the land, we've had to fence it off. It used to be all trash up there, they used to burn cars at the top of the hill, so I know that neighborhood is good as any butter that's talking right now, because I've owned it for almost thirty years. And my business partner owned it twenty years prior to that, so under our collaborative ship, we've controlled that site for fifty years, so we know it better than anyone, trust me.
Thank you, Mister Rose. Thank you very much.
Are there any other butters um, who would like to speak at this time? And I do not see anybody with their hand up.
Alright, is there a motion?
Motion to approve with uh, the following condition, add cash, catch bases to the new cul-de-sac on Arthur Street. Provide the proper wellhead declassification procedure, which has been followed and completed with the mass DEP.
Second.
Alright. Roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
One against all this, yes, right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I believe that was our last applicant. Okay. There is no other business, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
One against all this, yes. Thank you, everyone.
Is there anything we need to be coming to sign before we sign off?
Yes.
So we need, we need to come in and physically sign.
Wait.
I, we'll leave the Petronelli Way subdivision, still need signing.
Okay, well, I put a text out, maybe?
I'll be sending emails in the morning.
Okay. Bye, guys.
Alright.
Tony, are you fine? You were saying, wait, wait, wait.
Um, I, I, were there waivers?
Oh, goodness gracious.
Right.
We have to vote on the waivers, and we have to vote on, uh, are they have to tell us their surety. So they've left the room, but we are still um, rolling, if somebody would take back their motion to uh, adjourn.
Resent motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor to rescind the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there were two waivers. The first was to extend the road beyond the eight hundred feet that are subdivision regulations um, limits. And we would uh, recommend that that be approved.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the waiver for the?
Motion to approve waiver.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
One against all this, yes. Okay, second waiver.
And the second waiver is to um, uh, not construct the sidewalk on the north side of the property, north side of the cul-de-sac, which we would have uh, support.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
One against, well, James Sweeney?
Yes.
One against all this, yes. Alright, now is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
I'm going to assume that their surety is uh, the lot release, they're leaving the land as their surety. And we will correct that, or it, it noted if it needs to be corrected.
Perfect, thank you. Okay.
Now, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes, now, good night, everybody. Road, thank you, buddy.
Everyone.